All right. Good evening, everybody. I have seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Our call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Just a reminder to the committee and the audience that this meeting is being recorded. Do the roll call if you're here, please let me know. David?
Here.
Here. Jessica, I believe cannot make it. June?
Here.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Good, are here, sorry.
Randy?
Here.
Susan? I don't see. Tom?
Here.
And I'm here, so that is a quorum. Thank you, everybody. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held on Monday, June twelfth at seven P M. First, order of business is our consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes. We have accounts payable warrants, payroll warrants, and a series of donations.
Craig?
Yep.
And I apologize that I blew through this really quickly earlier before the weekend and looking at it. Not all the stuff for the consent agendas in here. There's only one check for the donation, and there's nothing for the warrants. Or that's not for the donations. I figured that much, but the warrant folder is empty.
Yeah, I don't know why I didn't get any any warrant information, so I couldn't pull it over.
So I would request that we pull that from the consent agenda.
Absolutely. Accounts payable and payroll will pull from the consent agenda.
Yes.
Thank you. So this will be approval of minutes from April twenty-one, May and May first. And the donations. Then I'll just read through them. So twenty-seven hundred twenty-five dollars from the S M S P T O to help fund field trip busing, twenty-three dollars thirty-nine cents from Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated as part of the clothing sales program, two thousand dollars from the Vernon Brook P T O to fund the grade three Sturbridge Village Field Trip, three dollars seventy-eight cents for box tops education to S E C C and forty-nine dollars eighty cents for box tops of B B.
So moved?
Second.
All right, Randy, thank you. All right, this is approval of the consent agenda. David?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. We did not have any public communications submitted this evening, so move on to our reports. First Chairperson's report. I saw just a couple of things and really more for the viewing public, I guess, in terms of the school committee and how we do business. It's probably just a good time to refresh people as we start a new new committee cycle here. So there's always a lot of thoughts and opinions out there on social media especially, but I do want to start by kind of outlining what these meetings are and how to get in touch with us. I think those are probably two important things. So these are business meetings. The public is invited to view these business meetings, just like the business meetings of any other elective body. We discuss matters that are in our purview, which is mainly budget and policy. And then receive updates from the administration on items of broad interest to the committee or the school district at large. Most of our work does occur in subcommittees, so you may see items come through this meeting and they may be big items that have little discussion here, and that's usually because all the discussion has happened in in our subcommittee meetings, finance, policy, communications, et cetera. So that may be wise. Things may come to this body and appear to go through in agreement, and that's because we've already had those discussions and deliberations. From a feedback perspective, again, public comment. We ask people to sign up in advance of these meetings and give give folks up to three minutes to speak their mind at these meetings, but honestly, the best way is to send an email, and you can do that to N M School Committee, all one word altogether, at N M R S D dot org. That comes to all the committee members, and again, that allows us to engage in some some back and forth, get more information, refer people to the right person in the administrative team and work to get answers. A lot of times, things that come through public comment here, we just can't discuss because it's not on the agenda. And that's that's more an open meeting law item than anything else. So highly encourage people to send emails. I know there's the there's the desire for folks, especially for issues they're passionate about to come here and 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 speak, which again, we appreciate. Not always able to respond, so I want to clear that up and make sure folks are clear with that. But again, ask people to send us emails. Policies, as you'll see later tonight, all those all policies that come through us go out on the website for at least two weeks for people to review and provide feedback. We I don't know, Randy rarely get feedback from from the general public, if ever. I know a lot of there's there's feedback out there that people want to have input on policies, and absolutely, that's that's why we put it out there for for two weeks. So highly encourage folks to go to the website, and as as we call it, policies will come through for a first reading. And that is the start of kind of the two-week period for those policies to be out there for review. And then it will come back to the committee for discussion of any changes that may have come through, and then approval, or could refer back for additional changes as well. So just wanted to put that out there again. N M School Committee at N M R S D dot org. If folks have any input. Randy, do you have a comment, question?
I just wanted to clarify when you were saying that a lot of the work gets done in subcommittees. I want the public just to understand that it's not the whole committee meeting in those subcommittees, and we're not making binding decisions. The subcommittees are no more than four members, so it is less than a quorum. We can't. We do not have any authority, but that is where a smaller group will go through a lot of the details to bring a better picture to the full school committee where all of our votes at this big meeting is where the decisions are being made. That's just recommendations being put forth.
That's an excellent clarification, Randy. Thank you. Yeah, that is. That's where recommendations will come forward from from those groups. Any questions from the committee or comments? Before I move on? All right, if there's any topics that, again, the public or school committee members feel deserve a couple of minutes to just make sure we've got the right information out there, just let me know, and we'll we'll cover it in a future meeting. All right, Superintendent's report. Superintendent Morgan?
Thanks, Craig. I'll be quick. I just wanted to let the school committee know that, as my update mentioned over this past weekend, last week, N M celebrated Staff Appreciation Week, and just want to reiterate again to the entire committee and to the public how lucky we are to have the staff that we do from from our teachers, counselors, admin, custodians, food service, paraprofessionals, nurses, secretaries, and hopefully I haven't missed anyone. I just really do a fantastic job. We wouldn't be where we are without them, so thank you. And that's all I have. Just wanted to put that out there to the committee.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Moving on to new business. First up, we have the F Y twenty-four preschool rates.
Thank Mr. Brooks. Yeah, well said, Craig.
Yep.
Okay, so the district has not raised preschool rates since F Y twenty-one just prior to COVID, so I did a dipstick measure with others, other districts in the area, A R Sterling, Harvard, Tewksbury, Bill Rick, Drake, and and our rates were all a little bit lower than theirs, so I'm proposing a minimal increase. It's a seventy-eight percent increase. We currently have about eighty students on a waiting list, so we've not heard from parents that the cost from preschool, you know, has been a hardship, and we have a very lengthy waiting list. So I'm proposing a minimal, a minimal raise in the tuition rates to be commensurate with other districts, and this is the first time we've done it in four years. Thank you.
All right, so I could not find my own mute button when I showed the screen. Take your question.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks, can you just repeat the percent that you were saying?
It's between six and seven percent. I mean, I'm sorry, it's between seven and eight percent.
Fantastic. That's what I thought, but I thought I had also heard seventy-eight percent, which was a little bit different. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, so my question, just looking at you know, what you're projecting here. So I know we it says that there's an extensive waitlist for tuition. I know when we talked about, you know, some of the stuff with with the budget in recent meetings, some of the considerations that I I might be misremembering this was that when we were looking at different things, that there was a decreased enrollment at the preschool? Am I misremembering that?
Right, so our worry when we moved the preschool from Vernon Brook over to Squanacook was that we would lose enrollment because of the Pepperell parents, and actually, our waiting list is longer than it was when we were over at over in in Pepperell. So we've not seen a decrease, and and we have multiple parents, you know, a month, reach out and ask, ask what the status of our waiting list is. And as soon as, you know, as soon as the slot comes available, we we open it up to them.
Okay, that's great. I just I was just concerned because I know, again, like talking about about budget, we had, I think, looked at that, and I think some of the decisions that we recently made may impact that, or am I mistaken?
You mean as far as if if we run the program?
Staffing.
It was that. So the 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 tuition money that comes in doesn't offset the cost for a teacher and a paraprofessional. So so because we looked into that a handful of years ago of opening up another class and just having more tuition-paying students in, but because we're because our program is approved by by D E S I, we need to have an integrated program, so we need to have half of those children with, you know, on I E Ps and half of the kids being typical. So we looked into that, whether or not we can open up another classroom or two and have some more tuition students. But because of our approval status with D E S I, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks, Tom. Randy? Randy, you're muted.
My hand was up by accident, so sorry.
Okay, no worries. Superintendent?
Yes, I just wanted to maybe have Mr. Brooks explain. I think one of the reasons why we were looking at decreasing some staff in the preschool program was because of the number of kids that were aging out sheer that were moving into kindergarten, just to address Mr. Casey's question.
Sure. So so historically, you know, we start the year with lower enrollment numbers, and then as students age in or turn three, you know, they they the preschool grows, and so it's the largest it will ever be at the end of June when school is out. But then then by by default, we move up thirty-five, thirty-two, thirty-eight kids, kids up into the kindergarten program. So it brings the numbers back down again, and so it's kind of that wave that we ride every single year. This year, we we were inundated with requests to evaluate two and a half and two and three-quarter-year-old students starting last July, and so those classrooms filled much quicker than they typically do, which was the reason why we had to add a an additional classroom teacher and additional paraprofessional in November of this year. And I attribute a lot of that to those of the kids who really didn't receive any in-person early intervention services during COVID. Many parents didn't know what services were available to those children, and so we saw massive influx of little guys that were eligible for special education. But that wave is kind of going to move the other way once we move all these kindergarten kids up into the elementary schools.
Thank you both for that.
I just have a question around. Because as these as these rates go up, is there any consideration for families where this might be a hardship, or they're not able to afford the increase?
So occasionally, what so if a if a family reaches out to us and asks whether or not we take, you know, vouchers for state assistance, we don't, because that's a completely separate approval process, but we have, we refer them to the the Seven Hills Childcare Resource Referral Network. And so every parent that's reached out to us that's asked about that, we've 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 referred them out, and they've received they've they've received some sort of childcare assistance with some of the local preschools.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? All right, then I will take a motion that the school committee approve the F Y twenty-four preschool rates as presented.
So moved?
Second.
All right, Lisa M. and Randy. Any other questions or comments? Right, seeing none. David?
Yes, sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. So we are a member of and correct me, Superintendent, two collaboratives, at least the Valley Collaborative, coming up, the Keystone Educational Collaborative. And as members, as district members of those collaboratives, we appoint one member on their Board of Directors, and I don't know if it's traditionally or always, we've appointed the superintendent to those to those roles. So the first, I'll take a motion, then we can discuss if we need to, but take a motion that the committee vote to appoint Superintendent Brad Morgan to the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the term July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, Randy and Lisa. All right, any questions, comments, or Superintendent, anything you want to add?
No, I'm I'm fine with it. In years past, it's it has been a challenge being on both because they tend to have the same meeting date, one at eight-thirty and the other at ten on the third Thursday of the month, but they have tried to work with me on that so that there aren't conflicts, because one of them is remote, the other one's in person, and they they do tend to overlap. But again, both the executive directors tend to work together to avoid those conflicts, and it's worked out pretty well the past couple of years.
Randy?
Would you want to have a designee for one of them, somebody else like maybe Brad Brooks or Gary Reese, as far as representing the district, so that you don't have that conflict between the two of them?
So I I believe that the Keystone is the only one that allows for a designee, and that would be a school committee member. The Valley does not, Valley Collaborative does not have, to my knowledge, the option for a designee. So again, it's more or less more or less Keystone, and you know, would certainly be appreciated, but as long as they continue to work together and avoid the conflicts, that's really that that's really what the key is for me, so that I'm not missing meetings, because you can't miss more than two meetings a year. So you generally have one a month, and you cannot be absent from more than two.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I was I was just going to reiterate what Brad said, that that in my role as Director of Special Education, I'm not allowed to be on on their board, because it's a voting board, and I'm on their I'm on their director board. So we looked into that a few years ago to try to alleviate some of the meetings for Brad, but I, in my role, I cannot be on that board.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other, excuse me, any other questions or comments from folks? All right, seeing none. This will be to appoint the Superintendent to the Valley Collaborative. David?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Sorry, yes.
No worries. Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. Similar similarly, we have the Keystone Educational Collaborative. And I'll take a motion to appoint Superintendent Brad Morgan to the Keystone Educational Collaborative Board of Directors for the term July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
I threw June and Lisa M. on that one. Any questions on this? All right. Seeing none. David?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, we have the History National Honor Society, Principal McMahon. He's on, yes. And there he is.
Sorry, Craig, how are you?
No worries, good.
Good. So yeah, thanks for letting us come in tonight. I believe Ms. Becky Jackson is on as well, somewhere I just can't see on my screen, but Ms. Jackson is history rapporteur chair at the high school. Came to me a few months ago with this idea of looking into National Honor Society for History Students at the high school. I'll let her explain in a second. There's only about a dozen or so schools in the state that are doing this. I think it's a very cool opportunity to really celebrate our students that are passionate about history, and are looking into that as a a career path. Having been a history teacher myself, I have a a little bias to this, this new branch of N H S, but I think it falls in line nicely what we've done with regard to National Honor Society as well as TR I M. So I let Ms. Jackson kind of explain where it came from and all we're looking for. So Becky, if you're on, go for it.
Hi, thank you. As Tim just said, we've been thinking about bringing this National Social Studies Honor Society to the high school for a while. We definitely have a lot of kids that are interested in the social studies, and with the passing of the legislation regarding the civic action projects, just in the past few years, the interest has really gone up amongst our student body. As of right now, the most updated list of Massachusetts schools that offer this is only at eighteen, and there are not many in our area, so this would be a really nice thing to bring to middlesex students who are interested in the social studies and make us stand out a little bit. We're looking at allowing juniors and seniors to apply, and the Honor Society is really centered around students, fostering students civic action, as well as their interest in the social studies. So the juniors who are just now starting their civic action projects, it would allow them as seniors to use to to continue those projects and really implement them either in the school community or their local community as their hours for the Honor Society. And the one thing we found over the past two to three years of starting to implement this project is that change takes a lot of time, even at a small, small level. So if students are able to continue their civic action projects with school administration as well as the social studies department, I think we could really foster some more excitement amongst our kids, and that's not the only thing the Social Studies Honor Society would do, but it's one of like the real world kind of practical kind of outputs. And that's where we're at. We've kind of surveyed our kids. The sophomore class in particular is very excited about it, as are the juniors, but that's kind of a quick overview, so.
So thank you, Becky. So we're bringing this to committee tonight for two purposes. One, to get approval to get things going for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year, and then at the appropriate time also as an advisor, ensure that Ms. Jackson is afforded an opportunity to get stipend and commence it with other Honor Society advisors at the high school. That's really it for this evening.
All right, thank you both. Any questions from the committee? Tom?
Yeah, just one. I I too definitely have a social studies bias, so I can appreciate that. Just thinking through as a committee member, though, through stipend, I know there are, you know, we're a language honor societies, science honor societies, you know, just thinking, you know, from a financial standpoint down the line, if if those are to be pursued as well, and and just the implications there. I don't know if you've thought through that at all.
Tom, fair question. No, to be honest, no, I mean, if this is if this is a start of something that other academic areas, core or elective, want to start looking into, then I think we want to certainly encourage that. You know, with that, I think we want to make sure that any advisor or step up who steps up is just probably compensated, you know, if that means a regulation of how we look at honor societies, that could be something we look at, too. I think that'd be worth it to, if we're going to go that route and expand to to see what this type of look like for the advisors, I think is more than reasonable. And again, if that if it creates an opportunity for other students in other academic areas, and yeah, I think we need to take steps, but I think to your point, though, make sure we don't ran it out too far, and we can't bring it back in financially. So I see both sides of that.
Yeah, no, again, I love the idea, fully supportive, obviously, probably biased supportive as well as you. Again, just just thinking through that. So I appreciate all the work to do that.
I appreciate it. It's a good point. So something to consider for other other content areas.
Thank you, Tom. June?
I just wanted to say that I really do like this idea a lot. I think it's going to be very beneficial for the students that participate. In fact, possibly opening up scholarship opportunity, and, you know, it looks great on, you know, resumes, colleges, stuff like that. So I think that's great, but it's twofold. It's not just for the students. It could be beneficial to the community as well, and I'm always in support of ways to bring our students and community together more. So I think this is a really good idea.
Excellent. Thank you, June. Randy?
Yeah, I want to, you know, kind of go over what everyone else is saying. I think this is wonderful. I really love the idea of having the honor societies at the high school and giving the children the opportunity to join in, to be productive, to have something more for their resumes and all of that. From the school committee side, Craig, I'd like to maybe going forward, really, any new stipend positions, I think we need to have the broader discussion first as far as what we have in place, how much we're paying, and have a discussion from the financial end of things on how we're going to have this process go forward instead of just these one-offs, because all of these positions always sound so wonderful. And I just want to make sure that it fits into our structure financially and in in every other way, so that we can, you know, kind of come up with a more structured format to receive and evaluate these positions. That would be good.
Randy, I I agree. I think, I mean, anything financial probably should go through finance as well, just for a recommendation, even if that's just a quick quick discussion.
Randy, to that point, I appreciate that, because I spoke to our building reps of, you know, the past couple of years about consistency with stipends, ensuring that those that are, you know, two, three, four years into their advisory are getting some sort of compensation. So I actually appreciate where you're going with that, because it would be great just to take a big look at what we're doing with that and how we're how we're filling those spots appropriately. So I'd be on board for helping with that process, because I think it would it would also give staff a clear picture of what they're in for, and but, you know, but it also validates the work. So I think what you said is totally dead on. I like where that's going. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Lisa M?
I love the idea, and we can pull it into finance and review the stipends and look at all of that structure and and come back to the committee with a better understanding. Does that work for you, Tim? All right, he shook his head, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, in, you know, getting the program started is the primary thing, you know. We want to get this started next fall, and I'm not going to put Ms. Jackson on the spot, but the stipend does not make or break this movement. We still want to have the National Social Studies Honor Society, regardless of compensation for the next couple of academic years, if need be. I think there's enough value to what June said. The community piece far outweighs the compensation. I think what we could get out of it from a community standpoint would be awesome. So yeah, I mean, I get where the committee's coming from. I just please know that our primary goal is to get it approved, and the stipend could be a secondary piece of the puzzle. and the stipend could be a secondary piece of the puzzle.
Right, if there's, um, no other questions, if someone wants to, uh, make a motion to approve that position, and then we'll, uh, we'll refer the stipend piece to finance.
So moved? Second?
Lisa M and June, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
What?
All right, so this is to, um, approve the History National Honor Society position uh, as it was presented. And, um, again, we will refer the stipend piece to the finance subcommittee. So David?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B?
Yes.
Lisa M?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you, Becky and Tim. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. Uh, next up, we had a, um, requests, uh, and I'm just looking for the name on the list, um, from Ms. Genotar, I believe is how you pronounce it, to speak about school librarians and there she is. Oops. All right, Meg, I think you're in and should be able to, there we go.
Hi folks. Can you hear me?
Again, good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for having me. Um, am I allowed to present here? Looking at my screen. Share screen, yep, I can. Okay, great. Um, I have a slideshow that I'd like to present as well. Um, first of all, I really want to thank all the school committee members here today. I know that you are all volunteers and I really want to thank you for the important work that the school committee does. So thank you very much. Um, is my screen being shared yet?
Robin, is there?
Um, can I share my screen? It says it's disabled from my end.
Should be all set now.
Thank you. So let's see. Sorry, folks. Is this one sharing? Is it sharing, folks, or not at all? No. Okay, I'm just gonna move ahead.
All right.
Um, so I am, um, I asked to come and speak to you today because, um, I wanted to shed some light on the unintended consequences of the recent decision not to have library teachers in the elementary and middle schools. Um, before I begin, I am Meg Genotar or Margaret Genotar. I have lived in Townsend since nineteen ninety-nine. I have raised two children here in town who have come through North Middlesex District. One graduated in, in twenty twenty and one in twenty twenty-two. Um, I am also a librarian at the Townsend Public Library and since twenty twenty, April of twenty twenty, I have been the Hawthorne Brook Librarian. And I'm here tonight because two and a half weeks ago, I found out that librarians at the elementary school and middle school were being eliminated. And I was shocked. Um, and then I found out that some paras were being hired to replace the librarians. And, um, I know that you had to make tough decisions and that you thought that, um, here's a budget line item that we are not required to fund. So let's get some cost savings to the budget. Um, but there have been a number of costs that are going to be incurred due to this decision um, that I don't think the district was aware of. And those include that by being eliminated from the, by eliminating your school librarian, the school is no longer, um, eligible for Ma- the Massachusetts Library Association. And that means that all of the databases, so Britannica and Gale Database and the online reading, um, app, Sora, which is also being provided, um, at a minimal subscription rate to the district, um, through the Massachusetts Library Association. Those benefits go away. As of June thirtieth, you don't have databases. You don't have Encyclopedia Britannica at the elementary and middle schools. Another thing that I do for the schools is, um, I use interlibrary loan to bring resources into the schools. So again, with the Massachusetts Library Association's, um, membership, I am allowed to borrow library books for the classroom. I am allowed to borrow audiobooks so that teachers can play those, um, when they're reading a story in class. I am allowed to borrow videos that the teachers can use in the classroom. Without the Massachusetts Library Association membership, those benefits go away. I can tell you that last year alone, I borrowed about a hundred and fifty books for classroom use. So those would have to be purchased somehow from the district. Um, but the real reason why I came here tonight and the real thing that's concerning me and why I felt that I needed to talk to you folks is that, um, I am concerned about the education that I am providing to the students at Hawthorne Brook Middle School. I am a librarian, but I am also a library media specialist. And I am the only media specialist in the Hawthorne Brook School. And what I teach the students is how to evaluate media that they find online. Information to make sure that it's real. How do we look at websites? I teach digital literacy. How do we use? How do we, um, legally make new information digitally? And how, um, do we evaluate that information to determine if it's real or not? So whether or not you decide that you don't need school librarians in the district, our students really need this education. They're, um, they need to be informed about how to find real information in the digital world. They just can't be digital literate citizens without that knowledge. And by eliminating the library teachers, unfortunately, you, um, that skillset is gone. The computer teachers that work in the schools right now teach um, coding. They teach to project lead the way. They're not teaching media literacy skills. They're not teaching how to find information and how to evaluate it. And that's why I really wanted to come here tonight was to let you know that I'm concerned about this lack in the education at the, in the school. So I thank you for your time and I hope that you will consider this because, um, I am greatly concerned about it.
Thank you, Meg. I appreciate you taking the time to speak with us.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has, um, if I can.
Anybody from the committee questions or comments? Dave?
Um, yes, uh, do you have an approximate number on about how much money, um, those books that you rented, uh, saved the district last year?
Um, I can definitely get you a figure. I would have to look up about what each one is worth. Um, I'm just, uh, guess, say each one of those books, you'd have to pay twelve dollars a copy. Um, a lot of the stuff that I borrow is like audiobooks and videos. Those are a lot more expensive. Um, one of the things that I'm actually greatly concerned about is that at this point, um, the audiobooks that are available through Sora are actually written into the IEPs for the middle school. So I don't know how the district's gonna handle that, because that, um, subscription goes away as of, um, June thirtieth.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Hey Dave, uh, June?
Um, thank you, Meg, for bringing this to our attention because I, I feel like not this entire picture was discussed, um, previously. Um, so I, I'm glad you brought that to the committee. Um, and I'm wondering, I, I, I don't think you would have the answers to the question I'm gonna ask, but perhaps Brad or Gary, um, how, what is the plan to address some of these issues that, um, that clearly we will be having?
It's something that we'll, we'll be addressing over the summer. So yeah, I don't have an answer for you right now, but it's something that we would address over the summer.
Do you have anything else, June? Are you good?
Sorry, I, I mean, if there's not an answer, then I guess I don't have any more questions right now.
I can, can say that the membership, um, expires on, um, June thirtieth to the MLA. So that means that is when the databases and Sora and those sorts of things will no longer be available for our students.
Thank you, Meg. Uh, Randy?
I'm, I'm just wondering if there's, um, similar issues with the elementary school as far as do they borrow books? How much do they use these resources through the Mass Library Association? Um, or is it, uh, more at the middle school level?
I'm, I don't think that I'm the appropriate one to ask. Um, that does depend sort of on librarian versus librarian, um, and how much we're asked. So, um, I can't speak to that. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it was kind of just thrown out there, um, you know.
I do know that the high school library uses interlibrary loan and they would still retain those benefits, um, because they still have a librarian.
Brad, I don't know, or Gary, you know, uh, um, whether these resources are used to the same extent at the, at the elementary schools?
We would have to look into it.
At the, the Britannica database, I know is used in research projects. So I suspect that that wouldn't be all that. I mean, the, the district's gonna have to pay for it out of pocket since they, they're not getting it for, by funding a library teacher. So.
Uh, Dave?
Uh, do you know how much Britannica subscription is per, uh, well, is it per child?
It is based on, I actually do know this because I looked it up. I can, I'm gonna, I'm referencing my email right now. Um, it's based on per student. It's gonna take me a minute to get there.
Of course.
And I, memory is telling me it was a couple thousand dollars per school to, to, it may not be that much. I have no idea about the other services. That was the only one that I could readily look up. It is not coming to me quickly. Sorry, folks. I wouldn't wait for.
No worries. Do you have another question?
Thank you. Uh, no, let me put my hand down.
All right. Anyone else on the committee with questions? Did you hand back up, Dave?
Sorry. What is the approximate savings between, um, cutting librarians and instituting, um, peer professionals?
I'd have to go back to the budget document and look, it was shared, it was shared a few weeks ago. Um, it depends on the, the number of years of experience a person has in the district, um, whether or not they're taking benefits and things of that nature. Um, but I don't have that figure in front of me. It was, I believe, presented at the last school committee meeting.
Anything else, Dave?
Um, yeah, sorry. Uh, there seems to be a lot of unanswered questions, but this is an incredibly important and serious topic. Um, would we be able to compile a list of these questions, um, given the information provided tonight and have information available at the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't, who is that to, like, just in general?
Sorry, that was to you.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think there's, there's questions being asked that, I mean, we can find the answers to, absolutely. I, I, they're, they're unanswered because we don't have the information right at our fingertips. So I think between, uh, superintendent and, and some of the budget information that's been shared previously, I think we can get the committee answers to most of those questions. I mean, I, I know this is a difficult conversation, so I mean, I appreciate having the conversation, um, and I appreciate Meg having the courage to come here and, and, and and communicate kind of what her concerns are and the impacts it's gonna have on the students. So I, I, again, really appreciate that. Um,
Thank you. I also have a presentation that I will mail out or email out to you folks with, um, more of my research and stuff.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be helpful. Um,
And if I can help in any way, I will. I am literally concerned about the information literacy that I feel that the kids need.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I, and I think, um, again, I where we're at, and again, we're not here to make a decision, so I, I want to preface it by saying that, but where we're at with the budget, um, there are, there is no easy decision. So I think getting as much information as we can, um, and making sure that we're making the hard decision with as much information as possible is gonna be, is gonna be key. Um, because there's no, just the way the budget is, I think, any folks that were at town meeting, at least in purple, heard just how difficult things are for families and seniors and, and everybody else in town. So, um, cuts have to be made. It's just a matter of, of where we're gonna take that from, unfortunately. Um, Tom, you have a question or comment?
Sorry, um, I, I guess if we're gonna like compile questions, I, it can wait or I can ask it now. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, if it's up to you either way, I, I wanna, I, I wanna not put people on the spot, um, especially if we don't anticipate having information, but I mean, if they're important questions, we can certainly talk about.
Yeah, let me, let me just, I, I'm happy to send it afterwards. That's fine.
All right, anything else from anybody? All right. Well, Meg, thank you again. Appreciate, uh, you coming and, uh, giving us some of the background. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate, um, the opportunity to speak, so thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, um, moving on to, uh, subcommittee reports. Accelerator repair. I was gonna bet that there wouldn't be an update and I figured if I said that, there would be an update. So Lisa.
There's no update and we don't have an update for finance as well.
Okay. Uh, Ashby Elementary, June?
Uh, no big update, meeting tomorrow.
Excellent. Uh, communications, Tom?
Likewise, no update.
All right. Um, negotiation and personnel, um, Lisa M and Dave?
No updates there either.
All right. Um, policy, Randy?
Uh, yes, we have one, uh, policy, uh, uh, policy KF dash E one, the school facility use rental and uh, personnel fee schedule. We've made an update to include, uh, season camp contract. Um, so there's notes on what would, um, qualify for season, uh, camp and then what the rates would be. Uh, this was, uh, thanks to, uh, Jeremy Hammond, um, and the superintendent working with the groups that we have in the district, um, coming up with something that, uh, covers our costs and is affordable for the uh, town groups. Uh, so you can take a look in here. This is just for a first reading, which means it'll go out, uh, if anybody has any comments, um, or questions, um, you'll have time to return those that we can discuss. Um, so I will move that we approve KF dash E one for a first reading.
Second?
All right, any questions, comments? All right, David?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa B.?
Yes.
Lisa M.?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And just as a reminder, the policy will be posted on the district website for public review and comment. And then we will typically vote to approve this to put it into effect at our next meeting.
Craig, I just wanted to let you know Susan is here. Catch me on the next vote. Yeah.
Hi, Susan. Welcome.
Hello.
All right, anything else for policy, Randy?
That's all for tonight.
All right, thank you. And then we have our liaisons to district town select boards. June, Dave, do you have any update or anything you want to share from your respective towns?
Nothing from Pepperell, no contact yet.
I have no update, but I do like that this was added to our agenda. So I will keep that in mind going forward.
All right. Well, I cannot take credit for that. I'll have to give credit to Robin for that one.
Yeah, I added, I thought it would be important, so I'm glad to be with it.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. And then we had one item that was added to the agenda after it was initially posted. And we have children of staff members attending NM schools. Superintendent Morgan?
Sure. So as the committee knows, it was a recommendation from me not to have school choice. At least at this point in time for the 2023, 2024 school year. And just wanted to put out there, I had been reaching out to legal counsel just because we did receive some requests from in-state staff members, so staff members that live in state that would like their children to attend NM schools. So I did reach out to Nick Domenello, our school attorney, and did ask what, what if any leeway we had. And he did say that there actually is an avenue to accept children of staff members that live in state. But it is a school committee decision if it is not something that is negotiated into the teaching contract, which is not the case right now. So we do have a handful of teachers in the district that would like to send their kids to NM, provided there is room. I have had conversations or correspondence with most, if not all of them at this point. And have explained to them that, you know, basically this is a decision that the school committee has to make for next year, and it is something that we would have to consider for negotiations moving forward with the next teacher contract. So just wanted to put that out there to see what the committee's thoughts were, provided we have room. And that we're not being put in a situation where we have to hire an additional teacher or staff member in order to accommodate a child of one of our current staff members. It is something that, again, if possible, and if there's room, I would recommend because it does create could create a hardship on a teacher that we could ultimately end up, you know, having look elsewhere so that they can get closer to, closer to their own community where their kids go to school. So again, something I would recommend, but ultimately it is something the committee has to decide unless it's in the collective bargaining agreement.
So do you need a, go ahead, Randy?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I think I already know the answer, but I do believe that we have done this intra-district. So if we have teach, we have some teachers that let's say live in towns and work in Pepperell. And we have a policy and they've been able to take their children into Pepperell so that they're in the same school that they are teaching. So that is something that we're already doing for the teachers. This would be for the teachers that don't live within the district to still be able to bring their children with them to the school that they're teaching at or in the district.
And we also have teachers that don't live in district that fall under school choice that have previously. But again, school choice is not something that, that I recommended this year. But we do have intra-district staff members for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Tom?
Yeah, just wanted to say I I definitely agree. Like it's, it's a nice incentive. The, I think the key piece to it is, is based on space. I keep looking at the numbers at Varnum Brook and it is chock full. So certainly don't, you know, want to, you know, create some incentives and I think that's great. I also don't want to create a hardship for a classroom teacher where their class sizes are swelling to do this too. So I just, again, the size piece is important. If it's there, I would certainly be in favor of it, but the size piece, just looking at those class size numbers and the budget where we're at, I, it's likely to go up anyways. So just very mindful of that.
June?
You may have said it, sorry, but could you give an indication of how many teachers this would affect that are looking to to have their kids come to the district?
I think for next year, we're looking at about three or four.
Right, any other questions?
And again, I would, I would assure the committee that you know, if it is something that the committee approves, I would not, you know, I'd look at it very much as I do school choice and make sure that there is room. And that we're not actually putting ourselves in a situation where we in K-4 breach the recommended class size and end up having to hire a paraprofessional or a teacher. If there isn't room, there isn't room. But if there is room, then I would like to afford them the possibility until we get potentially something in the contract or not.
Brad, this is Susan. Yes, who picks which school the child goes to? Let's say the child's an elementary school student. There's, you know, obviously three different schools the child could attend. Same with a middle school student, they have two different schools.
Yeah, so the teacher would generally make a request. And I can either honor that request at that particular school or not and potentially offer up another school, but ultimately it would be my decision in collaboration with the building principal.
Right, because I got, you know, that's kind of what I was getting at. Like if, if we said only if there's space, if there's no space at Varnum Brook, but there happens to be space at Spalding, we could say, well, you can bring your child here, but you have a choice between Spalding and Ashby because there's no more room at Varnum Brook type of thing.
Right.
Okay. I don't know what kind of motion to make, so if you propose one, I'll move the, move it. Maybe it's in the agenda. I'm not looking at that right now.
No, it wasn't. I kind of had the same question. I wasn't sure exactly how it had to be worded.
I think it would just be worded as having to do with essentially making sure that we're within the, operating within school committee policy and that there's actually space in order to provide a district employee with the ability to send their child to an NM school if they're an outside resident.
So something like I move that we allow students of in-state teachers to have, to accept their children to attend NM schools under school choice, pending available space.
So it wouldn't be under school choice?
Okay.
So it would just be
That part.
Basically, the, the motion would be something along the lines of moving to allow staff members' children that live outside the district but in-state the opportunity to attend North Middlesex Schools, provided there is space within the given school, something along those lines.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Brad, you need something more for a second? Just bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on that from the committee? All right.
Just that I think it creates community and I think it's a great, and goes along with we are NM.
All right, David?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B.?
Yes.
Lisa M.?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. If anybody has anything for the agenda they'd like to, to speak about at the next meeting, please let me know. Otherwise I will take a motion to adjourn. Oh, June, do you have a question?
I do just have a quick question. I know it's about that time of year for superintendent evaluation. Will you be sending an email out soon with forms so we can start doing our homework?
Yes, that is, that is a good reminder, June. Thank you. Yes, I will endeavor to get that stuff out within the next week or so.
And Randy, who participates in that given our new policy? Mike, if he wants to and what am I forgetting? Yeah, I guess that's it. All of us.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure what you're asking. Can you ask that again?
We had a policy about who participates. And I think outgoing committee members, current committee members type things like that.
Oh, yes, for evaluations, yes.
Yes.
Anybody who, we'd have to vote on any outgoing
Okay.
to be able to submit an evaluation if they wanted to. Otherwise, it's current members that have been in the position for, I think it was six months. We had said I'd have to double check that. Okay.
Lisa?
I, yes, I think we should maybe all talk about the meetings again. From changing it to the monthly instead of biweekly. My concern is just, I mean, I'm new, so, but my concern is what, like Dave had said at the last meeting, that there'll just be so much information to go through in that three-hour block where I'm thinking it might be a little bit like come even the fall or winter, it might be even overwhelming for a lot of people to make it, or parents to make it on to the six o'clock meeting.
Okay, yeah, well, we can add that to our next agenda, absolutely. I know there were some concerns raised, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. All right, anything else from anybody? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Tom, move?
All right, Dave and June, Dave?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa B.?
Yes.
Lisa M.?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes for adjourned. I appreciate the time, everybody. Have a good evening and we'll, we'll talk soon.